Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the, I don't even know what day it is. August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, Tenino City Council Work Session. All council members are present. Now, if I can remember my password. Password is incorrect, what is it? I was putting the same thing in every time. Third time's just...
Is your caps lock on?
Your caps lock is on. Gotcha. Alright. Finish signing the checks while my agenda boots up here. Let's see. Our beautiful weather is sustaining. What's the prediction on how much longer this summer's gonna last?
Supposed to maybe rain next, first part of next week, I guess.
Yeah?
Middle of September.
I have a nice heat pump now, so I can...
Nice.
...see it hot all year, but not... And, oh, I don't know what I want to tell you guys. Remember I said when the guys were here about the gabboos?
Uh huh.
That I'm probably somebody that might say you can make them that water tank.
Okay.
Well, I'm the guy, it's my grandson, my son-in-law, and my two grandsons and twin-sons that work for, that have worked for their father or... They do that kind of thing, and I'm gonna talk to them about the scattered people around the family really. See if I can't get them to volunteer their time, and my son-in-law and daughter-in-law, material to take care of that stuff. So they'll probably wanna meet with those guys.
Yeah. That's, uh, that's really cool.
You look like you're on trial. Your attorney hasn't shown up yet.
Or are you the attorney?
Alright, here we go. See council activities? Present. Yep, well, my computer had, it was super slow. No, no, no. Twenty-third, I got it now.
Okay.
Agenda packet. Agenda, there we go. Ladies and gentlemen, on the work session, we have no specific topics. So, we will move right into reports. And, uh, we'll, we'll just, uh, go ahead with the reports that we can give, that we're able to give right now. Okay. Alright, we will start off with the Chamber of Commerce report, Ms. Linda.
Uh, Chairman, uh, Cindy and Kat and others from the school district will be the speakers at the next chamber meeting in August, September, twenty-first, Southside. There was no, now I'm gonna just go right down to economic development, but there was no meeting in August. And a steady, there was no program, a steady meeting, county commissioners gave a report on the whole having five-member commission in both the county and the port. And the next steady meeting is technically scheduled to be held in Dakota on September sixteenth. The arch commission is looking, they're looking at scheduling a meeting towards the end of September, so Jessica is still busy with railroad days. On September seventeenth, Bob and Kenzie Sullivan is focused on the theater reveal at September fifteenth. And that's that report.
Okay, the theater reveal, I believe everybody has invitations downstairs.
We brought them up, there was only one.
Awesome, awesome.
I only had three for those three.
Okay. She's got her on there. So we'll make sure everybody's got copies of those.
For the theater opening?
Yeah. The, uh, the, the concept of the five-member county commission and port commission, I personally am and strongly in favor of that. And I, I would encourage you guys to get knowledgeable about it and talk to folks about it. Uh, and you know, whatever your feelings are, your feelings, but, uh, any, any government entity that is a three-person committee is just... It's hamstrung.
Yeah.
You know, so our, our county commissioners, there's three, and as you guys know, you know, a quorum is two. So there's no opportunity for them to have committees, subcommittees. Uh, there's no opportunity for them to, because anything that they do becomes instantly a commissioner meeting. So, you know, i- if they had subcommittees and things like that, they would certainly be, uh, public meetings, but say, there's some board and they wanna have two county commissioners on it. It instantly becomes a county commission meeting. So it makes them, it really hamstrings them. And then, the way it, just the way it plays out, all of our representatives end up North County.
And there's gonna have the redistricting also, so that...
So, yeah, so the redistricting is taking place, we don't know exactly what those districts will look like. But they can't have, the new districts cannot exclude where the current county commissioners are. So it takes, it'll take into account population, but not purely population. Uh, and it may, it may end up, where we end up getting a district ourselves, even though we have fewer residents than, say, North County. So we can end up getting very strong representation if they go to five commissioners, and it would, it would really, really benefit the city of Tenino.
At the meeting on, uh, uh, last week, it was a rare thing that all three could be there at the same time, but they put themselves on the master calendar, and that way they can all be there.
And then it was essentially a county commissioner meeting.
Well, maybe, yeah, kind of. It was, all three of them were giving us information on different things that are happening in the county and that affects us.
Yeah. There's, there's a, uh, a district, there's a, a commission, there's a meeting with the commissioners, I wanna say on the twenty-eighth, to talk about the five-member board proposal. I'm gonna try to attend. Uh, what I wanna learn more about is, there's, there's some type of consideration for having like communities grouped together in a district. And I wanna know what that language is, where that language comes from, because we do have some like communities down here, and if, you know, if it does benefit all of us to try and band together, um, that might be something we wanna work with our, our neighboring communities on.
Linda will tell you, I spoke very strongly against it.
We want one commissioner. Okay, uh, arch commission.
I almost said, I just said arch commission.
Okay, V C... Go ahead, no, no, you were gonna say?
No, I was, they were looking at the county meeting and think towards the end of September, because everybody's so busy still.
Okay. Uh, the V C B, uh, no, not necessarily report, but they were down in Tenino doing, uh, some, making some promotional videos today for the craft beverage industry in Thurston County. And, uh, it's gonna highlight some of our, uh, some of our businesses in Tenino. Rachel, uh, was a participant in that as well. Fire District Twelve.
No report.
Library, no report, museum. Uh, we do not have Jessica here, if she comes later, we can have her chime in then. T S, Tenino Community Service Center, not present, Civil Service Commission, no meeting. Facade Improvement Grant Review Committee.
I'm so excited that they got the crime, and the railroad car over there, grinded and ready to start painting, and I understand that they're gonna do some...
Okay, here we go again. Jen is just telling me that her, part of her plans are to put boxes with vines growing up, and so she's trying to keep the neighbors happy.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right over there, yeah, yeah. They're gonna make it like a railroad car.
Awesome. That white wood...
Right, the, they were gonna paint it a bright yellow, but it was such a gaudy color, she said we just couldn't do it. So they just wanted to paint it white, and I said, "Well, you know, that kinda nullifies the, the grant application." Well, she said then, I said, "You can still make it look like a box car, you can still make it look like a railroad car, even though it is white."
Yeah.
That's what they're gonna do.
Awesome. Uh, Finance Committee has not met, Planning Commission meets tomorrow, Public Safety Committee, Chief of Police, had no report. Uh, there's a press release coming out soon about an incident over the weekend, uh, where our police did a very good job. Uh, they've, and I, I don't wanna like, I don't wanna ru- ruin the press release, but, uh, it, it should be out soon, and I'll share it with all of you guys.
I got a call from Chief Auditor, this afternoon.
Excellent.
Told him I'll keep my eye out for the release.
Okay, I think I just have to read it, and I'm sure you'll get it ASAP.
He said they interrupted a burglary in progress.
There you go. Hey, I didn't wanna ruin the surprise, but apparently Dan does. Yeah, so our, yeah, I, it's just, you'll get the full story, but our, our, our officers were out, uh, over the weekend. An officer was, uh, with one of the deputies, and they actually, like, heard glass break. And they caught two people, uh, initiating a burglary, they're, so breaking into the Napa. And this is like, this doesn't happen very often, this is like, you know, like Batman-style crime fighting. And they ended up catching the burglary in progress, they, you know, caught these two individuals, took them at gunpoint, handcuffed them, took them into custody. Uh, only a window was broken, and we were able to stop the crime in, in its tracks. Yeah, it's really cool.
Yeah.
And, you know, they're looking into if this individual is linked to, or these, any, either of these two individuals are linked to a couple other property crimes that took place in the last couple months here in the city. So they're doing an excellent job, they've also had some assists with the county, where the county's giving them some shout-outs, so things, things are going well with the police department.
Glad we have the police department.
Yes. Uh, Public Works, Troy is back from his vacation. Seems like I say that a lot, he's a, but when you're an employee that's been here a while, you get a little more vacation, and, and he earns it, he works hard. Uh, and they're, they're knee-deep in public works projects. The, uh, if you were to go to the, the park now, and I posted a video about this, we have started the trail construction that will go around the backside of the park, the accessibility trail, uh, that will be paved. Uh, Troy's started to dig that in. Uh, at the end of the day, he was, he had gone from the museum all the way along the backside, where it goes in front of the pool, along the, that, that lagoon thing, and then had made it past the new park bathrooms. And he's filling in with gravel behind that, and then we'll get the asphalt pavers, uh, here shortly, coming in behind that. Then, again, that'll go all around the backside and tie into the county trail system, and it will also tie in to some of the existing walking paths. And so, anybody, you know, whether they've got, you know, they're, they're older and don't walk well on uneven ground, or they're in a wheelchair, we'll be able to completely tour our whole park, that's really exciting. Uh, so that's being worked on, the park toys, we anticipate them coming in mid-September. Uh, the ground prep is almost all done for the toys, we're pretty much ready to put in the footings, and then the toys will be mounted, and then we would go gravel, and then backfill with soft fall. Uh, we expect that that portion of our playground will be completed, the, you know, by the end of September. The pump track, uh, we would, we want to have the asphalt pads done, and everything ready for it by the time that the rainy season hits. And then when we take possession of them mid-May, we would just be able to mount them to the asphalt, and we would have a ribbon-cutting May sometime. The, the pool, um, and did you speak to Mike Marshall?
Yeah, he said he was gonna check in on that and sent me an email today, but I did not receive it.
Okay, okay. Uh, so we are, we are touching base with all our pool contractors to see where that's at, what's going on. The quarry house, again, uh, grit city construction expects to begin when?
After Labor Day.
After Labor Day, they'll be back in there wrapping up the quarry house. And, uh, that is pretty much it for our big construction projects, we had our pre-construction meeting for the Ritter Street project. Uh, we're very excited to begin that. Uh, the, the, you, there's some stuff on here about that tonight. The construction crews said they would begin first week of October, we're trying to pull them in a little sooner, 'cause there's a lot of stuff that they could be doing right now, so, uh, we're trying to make that happen. But, uh, the Ritter Street project should be beginning soon. Uh, we're not worried about that necessarily disrupting traffic, because the, part of the whole vision for the project is to completely disrupt traffic down Ritter Street. Uh, we've, you know, we've talked about this pretty heavily here. Ritter Street is a surface street that is constructed for neighborhood traffic, it's not a heavy used street like Sussex that is made for interstate traffic. So when it gets hammered by excessive traffic that is, uh, not people going to their homes in the neighborhood, it's people coming off Sussex, cutting down Ritter, and then going out Scookum Chuck, Crowder Road, Bukota. It's way more than that street is ever made to handle, so we, we want to completely cut that off. And it, the rebuilding that street, just the way the ownership kind of quagmire is at that weird intersection on the south end of Ritter Street, it pretty much necessitates us blocking that complete, street completely off. So if you look at it just in Google Maps, the road kinda goes down, and then it does this thing where it gets huge. And if you've, you know, everybody's sat at that intersection, and you get a stop sign, then you get up a little further, it's weird, because there's a bunch of pavement there that the city never should've put there. Uh, and a bunch of that street is actually owned by the, the property, the, the lot that Mercy Housing's on. So we can't, like, reconstruct road we don't own without purchasing it, so we're turning a lot of it back into green space. And Ritter Street will be capped off at its southernmost end, and you would just loop around onto like, what is it? Fourth or fifth street? And it will be truly a neighborhood street, uh, and people won't just use it as a, as a cut across. So it'll last longer, it'll be used for, you know, what it's like engineered to be used for. We're getting sidewalks, we're getting new water lines, and there'll be a little parklet at the end, so we're excited about that. City Planner, uh, met with, uh, the city planner today, we're meeting again tomorrow, and we're going over some of the stuff that the Planning Commission is working on regarding the Ag Park. Code Enforcement Building Inspector, uh, he's working hard, he's, uh, he's got a lot of things on his plate. I could probably, he hasn't been in here for a couple meetings, so it's probably a good time to bring him in and talk to him again. Uh, Park Specialist, she, uh, took a little tour up to the Bremerton area to look at some, uh, some park amenities up there, that we're, we're really interested in kinda scoping out. And, and you can expect a presentation from her and I on it sometime in the future. No report from the city attorney. Clerk Treasurer.
Hi. Um, we had a big meeting last week with Martin, what's that company's name that he's with? Total blank. They're running our rate study, um, to really evaluate all the things, um, they're gonna take, I don't think we've had one since two thousand sixteen, so we're hopeful that with the septic receiving, taking that into consideration and what it may look like in the future. And, um, we're hoping we can make the sewer rate go down a little bit, I mean, that's our hope. So, we're compiling tons of data to get them all the things they need, which is a lot of things, and, um, that should be done by the end of the year, so expect to hear more on that. Um, I've been working with the department heads and prepping for budget season, um, everybody's making their wish lists and all the good things. Um, the City Hall Reno, I know we mentioned that was supposed to be on tonight's meeting, um, we will have everything to you guys for the next meeting, um, on the closeout and finaling all of that up. So, um, other than that, just working on grants and, uh, you know, all the good things.
Thank you. Uh, my report, I've kinda said a lot of it in the other department reports. In addition, I participated in the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser, uh, to be in a dunk tank, and I raised more money than Mayor DePinto, so he got put in the dunk tank the other weekend. If you wanna see me throwing balls at him and dunking him, you can see that on Facebook.
I did see that.
Yeah, it was pretty fun. Uh, Be That.
Summer break, still.
Summer break. Solid Waste Advisory Board.
Meeting's next week.
Thank you, ma'am. Tenino School Board.
Choose Love is still looking for donations, they're doing the, fill the backpacks for school supplies. And so on their website and also on their Facebook page, there's an Amazon link, so there's a few more items left. If you, if anyone would like to donate, you just click on the link, and it takes you right to the Amazon page, and it shows the supplies still needed. Um, so they're still looking for those, if anybody wants to donate. Um, so, back-to-school stuff, all the exciting things. Um, kindergarten, this week, started easing their kids into... Thank you.
Donation from John Callahan to Choose Love. John chooses love.
Thank you, John.
Keep the rest.
Thank you. Um, uh, kindergarten easing into back-to-school this week, um, they started them with their little half-days to meet their teacher and kinda get used to going to school and being away from mom, which is sometimes kinda hard. And dads, oh, Jason.
Thank you, thank you.
And dads.
Jason's a strong advocate for families.
I, I deal with a lot of moms at preschool, it's, it's rough. But anyways, so the thirty-first is, um, elementary school and middle school, um, their open house. And then also on September sixth is Parkside's, uh, first and second grade and high school is their open house. Um, football is in full swing, one of the things that I wanted to bring up, which is super exciting, so September seventeenth is the big one, that is the game that's gonna be at the Lumen Field. The link was posted on the, um, district's website, but it was taken off, because they're gonna, they have to go in a different direction as far as, like, accepting money and getting tickets. And I think the most expensive ticket's like forty dollars, so, um, keep a lookout for that link, they're gonna have a new one posted at some point soon. So, anyone who bought tickets before, those tickets are still good, they're still valid, it's just they're gonna go a different way in purchasing and stuff, so. But that one is super exciting, our boys are gonna actually play in, in a stadium.
Against the Seahawks.
I am super excited about it.
Against the Seahawks?
Yeah, no.
No.
Well, I...
That is really cool.
No, don't lie.
They might have a chance this year.
It's the Chloaya, Chloaya?
I don't know, it's pretty cool they're gonna play.
K-L-A-H-O-W-Y-A Eagles, Chloaya?
What?
Chloaya. Chloaya. Chloaya Eagles is who they're playing. No.
And where's Chloaya from?
I don't know.
Where is Chloaya?
From Chloaya, sounds like it.
It sounds like it.
I wonder where, though.
I'm, I'm, I don't know.
Got a little thing called the internet, right?
I don't know, but that's gonna be a super exciting game, and what a way to start the season.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah. So keep a lookout on the district, um, webpage, because they're gonna have that link, and so get your tickets while you can.
It's in Silverdale.
Silverdale, that's where they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's September seventeenth, so mark down your calendars.
Very cool.
It is a home game for tonight.
Oh, in Seattle.
Oh, it was scheduled as a home game.
Yeah, yeah.
So they're gonna be the home team, I think.
Pretty awesome, the Chronicles, uh, not sleeping on them this year, last year, the first game, I think they were kinda like trash talking the Beavers, and this year, they're like, "We're gonna, we're gonna..."
They mentioned how, like, they're in the business for, they're gonna kick in on the last over that last...
Yeah, yeah.
They got P L as their first game this year.
They what?
P L, the first game this year, yeah.
Okay.
We'll see if the Chronicles...
Mm-hmm.
True to that.
Yeah.
T R P C?
No meeting today.
Okay. Alright, that brings an end to our reports. We will take a brief recess unless anybody has any subjects that they would like to talk about.
I wanna, I wanna talk a little bit about this...
Okay.
...proposal.
Okay.
This supplemental agreement, I don't understand.
Okay. So on, Jen?
Yeah.
Are you prepared to talk about that?
Yeah.
On the agenda tonight, under, uh, old business, we have Ritter Street Improvement Supplemental Agreement Amendment Number Two.
So the original agreement that was agreed upon did not include engineering costs or construction management, and so they're adding that, and that is why there's a difference now. Yep. Does that answer your question? Okay.
I called him to ask you, I called him, and he was working.
I'm like driving a fire engine, I'm like, "Rrrr, I don't know, Linda!" Yeah.
To, to, I have a question. When can we do something about this, this line?
Ah. Our interior designer. Okay. We were debating what type of shades are appropriate.
Yeah, we definitely were discussing if we should get Romans. Do you know, does everyone know a Roman?
Let's get the councils input on what kind of shades we should get in here.
We need shades for the period. We have...
The Romans made stone buildings!
Uh, blinds?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So blinds, the way the windows sit will be weird, because they don't have anything to sit in, like a, like a...
We don't want them outside, we don't want them like, we don't want them sitting, like, right out here.
Yeah.
And ruining the frame, we wanna find something that sits into the frame.
We thought about a Roman, because that's like a fabric, it's a real thick fabric, and you can just get one that's kinda sheer that will block the sun only and not take all the light away, because the natural light is amazing, but...
Yeah.
Uh, and so I think we probably need these two windows.
And we don't want to, like, put the, the film...
Yeah.
Like we did downstairs on the upstairs windows.
No.
We could maybe on the side ones, but not the front ones.
Flying trucks coming through town, I think, if we put the...
Oh, yeah, well, if you put a shiny tent, we could tint the side windows, but...
Why, the side windows don't need it.
Yeah. The natural light, the shades on all the windows? It's just probably needs to.
I would think all, if you're gonna do it, do them all.
I mean, 'cause you could see, like, it's...
Well, yeah, because, I mean, I suppose it's getting, yeah.
Yeah.
They, some of the very next job, they're cleaning them, it looked very...
Yeah, right. So, yeah, I don't pick furniture or colors or shades or...
Because you, you are the interior expert to put them on the outside of the wood, I really don't think it would be, no.
I think it would be hideous.
Hurt my heart since...
Yes.
I...
And you can even do...
And then to match this color, you know, what do you get, a wood line, a wood cup?
I think you gotta match the, the white, I think you gotta match the white.
A cream color, and it's best to have a wooden one, it's the old-fashioned wooden look.
Yeah, the big, the thicker.
Yeah, I like dolphin gray.
Emerald green.
Those were a thing, yeah.
Seafoam green.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yeah.
Seafoam green, yeah. Back in Linda's day.
Little ones, too.
Ooh, can we go on?
If you want, we can bring in some fabric samples, so you can see what...
Yeah, like, can you just sew some?
What, Judy could knit some.
Knit, did you say knit?
I don't know, see?
That is offensive to the women of the sewing world.
Of knitting?
No, knitting is not the same as sewing.
What are you talking about?
Yes, so...
Quilting?
Quilting. Not crocheting.
Just like what Judy does, not knitting.
I don't know the difference.
Oh, my garage, Judy.
Oh, my garage.
I'll have to bring you a coat next time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's not our colors, they're actually golden, uh, gold and emerald greens.
What were...
Gold and emerald green.
Gold and emerald green.
We should change that.
Ken Jones, uh, did the research on it, and actually...
Oh, you, you mean not the school colors?
No.
Oh, that's...
The city colors.
Oh. Oh, my God.
Yeah. I'm with that, yes.
Yeah.
A nice beige.
I can see that.
I can bring some colors in, just so you can see whatever works.
Yeah, I just don't wanna go to like, Kmart or something and get blinds.
Do you not like beige?
It has nothing to do with that, it has to do with the way you look.
Steve's Discount Blinds. Like, Jen, Steve, there's a place called Steve's Discount Blinds, we'll come in and do it, and they have like nice wooden ones, and like all different styles of blinds. I don't even know what a Roman shade is. I know, but I didn't look at it.
They go like this.
Oh, that sounds horrible. Who would want those?
I had them in my house that time, when I bought that house, and now my sister, whatever, she had in there.
Those aren't, oh, those aren't bad, actually. Those aren't, oh, those aren't bad, actually. Yeah, these are kind of cool. Ladies and gentlemen. It is now seven thirty. We are all deciding what kind of window blinds we should put up here. That's the hotly debated topic of the evening. Uh, but we are going to now start our regular agenda for the August twenty-third to Tenino City Council meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, we need blinds. If we had Roman shades, we would have. We have an agenda before us needing approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. We have a meeting minutes for eight, nine, twenty, twenty-two.
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Now we have the consent calendar consisting of August tenth, twenty twenty-two through August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
It's okay.
Payroll E F Ts in the amount of forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Claims checks number three zero eight one one through three zero eight four three. And E F Ts in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-four cents, for a grand total of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty cents, as well as liquor cannabis license renewal for seventeen seventy-six Tenino Bar LLC. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar?
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We have no executive session, no presentations. Brings us to public comment. If there's anyone in the public that would like to comment, you can phone in now. Seeing no one in the audience to provide public comment, we will move on. No public hearings, no proclamations. Old business, uh, Ritter Street Improvement Supplemental Agreement and Amendment Number Two. I will ask the Clerk Treasurer to come up and present the, uh, the agreement and answer any questions. I know you already talked about it, but you just kind of brief it again, because.
Do you want me to read off of that?
Oh, you're, newspaper.
You need your sunglasses.
Oh, no, I know.
Put the, put the shade, the sun, put the aviators down.
Hold on, there we go. Oh, perfect. This is very comfortable.
We don't need Roman shades at all.
No, this is on wheels for a reason.
The lecture.
Um, okay, yeah, like I explained, um, we're doing an amendment as well as this supplemental agreement for the Ritter Street project. Um, this is, you can see on here stating that the original scope of work, um, did not have the engineering or the construction management, so it is a twenty-seven thousand, three hundred dollar difference of what, um, you're voting on.
Second. It moved and seconded to review and approve Ritter Street Supplemental Agreement and Amendment Number Two. Is there any discussion?
Uh, just real quick, so, so that the public knows, once the project gets started, I believe you said, uh, October, it'll go through Christmas, and so just have a little bit of patience. Once everything gets started, you'll be happy with the end result.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. That brings us to new business. We have none. We have no resolutions, we have no ordinances. We have completed our reports. Linda, your record is going down. Yes. Uh, that brings us to public announce, comment number two. We have no members of the public. Do we have any announcements?
Uh, yeah, I just want to bring up real quick that, uh, uh, First Responders Potluck BBQ is September tenth, and I've talked with its non-young at heart people. Yes, it is. It's on. Good. But, uh, their, their event is starting at two o'clock. Uh, the First Responders, it will start at noon, so there's gonna be a little bit of an overlap. We'll be able to make an announcement, uh, let everybody know to move on down there, uh, to, to the Young at Heart, uh, uh, party and fundraiser. Also, uh, the museum will be open, so we'll be able to give tours as well. We did it last, last year, and, uh, we'll be able to do it again this year.
And I, I believe that the, uh, actual reveal of the theater plans is going to be about three o'clock, so it really works in. I think that's what Jenny said, that they were, would try to do that so that you, the, um, First Responders picnic would be over with when they did the reveal, so.
Is the First Responders picnic at the park?
Park.
Okay.
All right.
I just want to say on behalf of Jessica, I know that for railroad days, she brought in some flyers. I don't know if everybody has any, but, or has somewhere to help distribute them, but I know she has a ton of them. I don't know if you got a copy of, she has a little square one, if it wanted to go in the paper. You know, just getting that out there for her.
Have you got it at City Hall?
Yeah, we have a stack at City Hall.
I'll send, I'll send, um, Doc Wilson, she'll pay.
Oh, awesome.
Everywhere.
That'd be fantastic, yeah.
The landmark.
Yeah.
The Eagles. All right. That, uh, these short meetings, enjoy them, because when budget season comes, we don't get to do this anymore. Meeting adjourned. Five minutes. Linda?
Yes.
Five minutes.
Did we beat the school?
You even beat, beat the school board.
Oh, man.